So, I had the pleasure of going over step one, which talks about focused mindset. And so, within that chapter, there's actually, or within that step, there's actually four different chapters that we'll kind of discuss individually. So, chapter four starts out with a little, you can turn to page eighty-three. A little story about physicians, totally coincidence that I'm using that. Which is actually the backstory to hand hygiene. So, we need a physician who goes into a mother baby and OB unit, notices that there's an outbreak of bacterial infection, and traces it back before hand hygiene, right? So, then he goes in with this protocol to try to get physicians to wash their hands with their procedures, and realizes that there's just a ton of pushback. The physicians didn't do it, they didn't want to change their practice, it was a little buy-in. You know, it's kind of this old antage of, if it ain't gross, I'm gonna fix it. This is the way we've always done it. I can't see why I have to do it, why can't this person do it? And although we see what the problem is, we don't want to change it. And we see this all the time in healthcare, and obviously, there's a tie into how the path of education. How we keep doing the same thing over and over again, having to change our current practice. We can't see how the problems are directly related to our own behavior, right? So, if you keep turning, you can see a courthouse. Like I said, the position hated this fraction, it was really related to just kind of looking at turning how we change our own behavior. So, if you look forward to page eighty-seven, how this ties into school board behavior is how our adult behavior can influence the behavior for the outcomes of our students. So, for those of us who are in positions of leadership, our adult behaviors directly affect our student outcomes or our student success. So, the first thing that he talks about here is an example, and I'll put this out here for anybody who needs to process it. Our students pay for our behavior. So, the question for the group is, state of time, were you new of an initiative or a thought process that would have changed a student outcome, and you chose not to push it because you thought it might cost you directed something? And that's because of your reputation, time, the way that you looked, you might have looked good, and you didn't push it, you did the same thing because of what it might cost you to do. Anybody, anybody, somebody?
Tough question.
Well, it's the question, you kind of rephrased the question that was in here. Okay. So, I thought about that, you know, as an example of the time my choices, my adult behavior made a part of a student's thing. And so, I thought about when we were talking about, although it wasn't a it was a superintendent decision, but when we were talking about when students should return in person during the pandemic. Right, and so, we know that like our communities, you know, was split, like was national conversation about that. And I was just so worried about teachers and students, the possibility of them dying. But, you know, there was the loss of learning that was happening, you know, right there before our very eyes, because this was all new. It was a personal decision for me, but I knew that there were folks who were on the school. I was on their side, and they were on my side on that discussion. But I kind of struggled with the question because not one board member, you know, it's a collective decision, you have to have a majority. And so, you know, my one choice, even if it was my vote to delay going back, which at the time it was, from when the superintendent said we were gonna go back, you know, I don't, that direct harm to someone because of that. You know what I'm saying? Because if it takes three board members to make that decision on those types of decisions, even though that was a more superintendent decision, it's not like we took a vote on that. I'm pointing at you, but this wasn't the superintendent right now. I'm just pointing at the seat. So, I kind of struggled with that. But that was, that's what I thought about, where potentially there could have been harm done because no students weren't in classrooms, you know, facing the face of the teacher.
Maybe not take understanding, pushing the other side of the perspective. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think at the beginning of, I marked it, even though I did this wrong. Beginning of chapter three, there's a quote where he says about, "A few times in my life illustrate this harmful mindset better than my first year as a school board member", where it taught me the job that I thought I came to do and the job that needed to be done were two wholly indifferent things. I know I came on this board swinging, and my
That's the best one. Right, one more time.
Zoe, did you hear that?
Dr. Sultan. But the, I did realize that that had to change, like to Jana's point, nothing happens if three don't wasn't to be right, my job was to be convincing. And that, that, I'm working on. But, yeah, that's where what serves me, I mean, it's a hundred percent, that's what sort of the case.
And to kind of follow that up, he says here, if you look at page eighty-eight, he says, "In group settings, including board members, people want to work there. And if you want to be praised for our efforts, but we have to be willing to interrogate our past behaviors and figure out what's made it harder for our students to be successful, to look at them closely and to look at, looking for why we chose the behaviors that we chose." So, I'm gonna bounce this back to the executive team.
Y'all didn't know you were here for the school work.
Y'all wanna come up to the mic?
What is an example of an adult behavior hard for our students to be successful? Somebody, anybody, otherwise I'll call whoever's looking at me.
It's on the tip of your tongue, Karen, I can see it.
Come on, Karen.
Essentan is up.
Oh, Essentan.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Mmm, that's a good one.
Any else? There's no right, there's no wrong answer. Fifty years. Beautiful, ourself. How self-centered, to mention on this plan. And COVID is not about self-centered, recognizing that there's always help, or very deeply about what they do, there is a level of sentiment that comes when someone points out in our community. That's a great transition point, full transition. On page ninety-one, he talks about the optics of not doing those adult behaviors, and how that's a phenomenon, and just kind of like a bullet by bullet kind of synopsis of what that does, right? So, and how we, as board members or leaders or probably the executive team, how we pretend rather than confront, or how we kind of push past rather than dig into those behaviors. So, pretending that I read all the materials rather than at the start of the meeting, when I really didn't. Pretending that I'm trustworthy while not being completely honest with the superintendent or other board members to make myself look good. Pretending to be unified when I'm actually undermining my colleagues on social media. Pretending that the welfare of students is more important to me than my own reputation and livelihood. Pretending to be an advocate for my students, but then not speaking up for my school system or my students because I want to be popular. Pretending I'm only well-meaning, the only well-meaning member of the board. Pretending I know what students need, when I have not rigorously investigated. I thought that was actually a good way to start, but that's the most, I thought that was the most weighted chapter. So, I'll kind of speed through the other two. The second chapter kind of hints at why, kind of our why and why school boards have this adult focused mindset, kind of how we settled into focusing our adult thoughts, when really, our why should be students. So, we should be heavily focused on student outcomes and why we kind of settle into having our adult focused issues in school board agendas, right? They kind of start out by, he always starts these chapters out by giving you a little bit of an anecdote, a kind of little anecdote about how superintendent had a, they wanted to pass a literacy, a literacy issue, like if I'm ready, a little literacy initiative, which is what created it, and really ended up, they tied it to word acquisition, ended up failing. And then in the end, the superintendent was like, well, you know, that's probably because you told me how to, you had your own agenda in trying to pass this particular initiative. So, if you turn to page ninety-nine. Some of the ways that we can get out of that adult focused mindset is to make sure that our school board agenda, to make sure that our executive sessions are all focused on student outcomes. So, if you look up page ninety-nine, he gives some examples of that, where he says, "A truly balanced school board is focused fifty percent of its board meetings each month, on clarifying priorities and monitoring progress. Policies that are monitored are actually priorities. The returns can only be known if priorities have been clarified and then prodded towards them and monitored, are monitored." And students have positive learning experiences, and this means not at the end, and not at the end. If students, if schools ensure that students go on field trips and are happy about their schools, but chose to actually learn anything, that's not a victory. Just wanna get some thoughts.
That last, the next sentence, "A wonderful culture and climate is an adult input, not a student outcome." Where is that?
Page one hundred.
Mm-hmm, that was literally the next sentence. That speaks, obviously, as we're preparing to review the first, the baseline data in the first quarter of our strategic plan. And I think about the refining that we will need to do, because it is a living document. Inputs of adults versus outputs of students, and where the weight is, and where the, where we need to be focused in all indicator, that little part right there for me.
Any other thoughts on that? We're looking at this first bullet point on page one hundred.
What gets measured matters. What doesn't ends up not mattering. I love this chapter, I was making that noise, because I think so often we get passionate about a outcome. I love that example, I love the one about the speed bump in a second, because some of them may be passionate about like, I want student success, and then they share that, assume that that passion applies to the method that they're gonna use to get there, and don't give the other people the space to implement the policies that they want to. Like I have, I've had very frustrating conversations with some of the voucher conversations publicly that are happening out there, and they're so passionate about improving education, and assume that I disagree about that. But I don't disagree about improving education, why do you keep referencing that? When you gotta keep the focus on the actual outcome, and we can share that passion and disagree on how we get there. I love this example, I love the way that they talk about, you know, field trips, victory, a wonderful culture and climate is an adult input. So like, you have to have the culture and climate to try things, and we as a board say, what we're passionate about is improving the numbers at the end of the year, at the end of the month, at the end of the semester. Do what you need to do to get there.
To take it a step further, it's actually, the numbers are the way we're measuring what the students learn, like we want the students to learn. Not, excuse me, the numbers are just a measure of that, but the outcome that we're seeking is student literacy. You know, students, yeah.
I guess my only, the actual, because I, you know, culture and climate is so important, I'm, our activity, what am I?
South.
I'm south, I'm a feelings person. And so, I was, I was, you know, I thought a lot about that, because, and I know you didn't mean it like this thing, but I guess how it happens does matter to some extent, you know what I'm saying? Because, you know, we have all, I think, probably, most of us were in a traditional school environment. There was some role learned there, probably, that, and so, and I mean, I think we probably, probably form well in our test. You know, but that doesn't work well for everybody. And so, I found myself questioning, questioning some of the things he said. This, I mean, it's a good read, it's an easy, easy read, you know, and it had me thinking, but like, I, I wondered, like, what an example of a time when my choices, my adult behavior, so I was like, are choices and behaviors? Like, are those, can you, those interchangeable? I found myself looking, you know, online, looking those words up, you know, and so, but I agree that ultimately, you know, in the end, you know, we are concerned about student outcomes.
I think a prime example is summer school and summer learning. What summer means for annual employees and staff and school readiness. So, you have about two months to jam pack a lot of stuff. From how do I remediate those standards that students really need to master? What if I want to accelerate in taking it? At the same time, I need to make sure that the building is ready, so people need to be able to get in there and clean it and paint it. At the same time, even if I'm an annual employee, I do need to take a rest and a pause and just take some time for me, because there is the need to rest and rejuvenate. All of those are conflicting, could be perceived as conflicting items. But the adult choices could be, do you run a five-day summer school or a four-day summer school on ten? You know, a ten-hour workday for four days versus a five day. What does that mean? So, that's an example of where it's, it's a choice and a behavior, but you have to think about what's the number one. So, yes, I'm, yes, it's November and it's a little chilly outside, and I'm already thinking about what summer learning and the summer experience would be, but that's a prime example of an adult choice and an adult behavior that really can have outcomes for kids. Even in when it's not the traditional August to May timeframe. I understand the choice and the behavior. The behavior is, I really wanna be at the beach. The choice is whether we sacrifice it or to make sure that, for those that need that extended time, they're provided it.
I do think Jana has brought up a good criticism, and I think it's worth digging into, because I don't, I didn't interpret the book as adult inputs being bad necessarily, they just must always serve for the students. One that you raised is a great example around culture. We could game the system by making it a grindhouse and just churning through and rote memorization and brutally pounding this down kids' throats, and they'll pass the next test, and our numbers will look good, and we'll have a higher dropout rate down the line, and kids will not retain the information, and it all, and we will fail at our actual objective, which is not the test score. Our actual objective would be the student literacy and success. And that, I think, was a little bit of the point that I was trying to make, that it isn't, yes, we're measuring these things in data because that's the data that we have, or that's kind of the agreed-upon way to show success, but we can't lose sight of the fact that even that data is meant to only measure what we actually want, which is the long-term benefit for these kids.
And I think too, going back to, if we are listening to student voice, I think culture and climate is student voice, especially now, since COVID. I think that this generation does a much better job of wanting to focus on the whole child than when we were growing up. And so, maybe before, I would say that culture and climate is not a student outcome, but I push back on that, actually. I think that it is very much so, a student outcome, because along with being able to be career and college ready, just being ready in life, and that, and that's the holistic part of it. That's the mental health, the focus, the major focus that we have on children's mental health goes directly into student outcome. So, I would, that's the one thing I think I would push back on that and say it's, I mean, maybe it could be both adult input and student outcome, right? But I definitely think that it is.
Because I also want to say, if everything, can everything be measured?
We're gonna talk about it today. Some of it's qualitative, some of it's quantitative, some of it's an absentee sub, and some of it, you're gonna see a little bit of it today. We'll put it to the test.
Let's save it to the next time, that sounds great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Sultan, for leading the conversation. We will not discuss the chapter in December, we will resume in January, where I will facilitate part two, step two, clarifying priorities. Dr. Whitaker, you want to introduce the policies for discussion?
Yes, I, at this time, I'd like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, our Chief of Staff, to discuss three policies.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Sultan, esteemed members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Jana Whitaker. Today, we have three policies on our pre-work agenda. Policies that are presented during pre-work are new business on which we are seeking input. These policies are being presented as initial drafts. They are being shared to gather your input and feedback that can be reflected in drafting or revising future versions. The policies for which we are seeking your input today are all financial policies. They are DC, Annual Operating Budget, DJV, Expense Reimbursement, and DK, Student Fund Management. These policies align to our strategic accelerator, organizational effectiveness, and excellence. I will present each one individually by highlighting this content and then ask for any input that you have. First step is DC, Annual Operating Budget. This policy states that the Board of Education will be responsible for the annual approval of a final balanced budget. It indicates the superintendent's responsibility for preparing the draft budget for the Board of Education for a fiscal year that will run from July first through June thirtieth annually. It outlines steps in the budget adoption process such as pre-budgeting discussions, public hearings, and timelines. It requires budget amendments for any changes over ten percent in any function or any fund of the budget. At this time, we would like to be considered for revisions to the policy.
Are we explicit in the policy regarding publishing a budget book?
That part's not explicit, but it's a, what we will do.
Language, making it explicit?
Yes.
The part of ten percent not having a minimum, when you say any function or any fund, jumped out to me. Like if there was something that was ten percent, but was only five thousand dollars on some fund or something, do we have to amend the whole budget? Is there anything in that category that comes, is that small?
We can do some research on that and we'll get back. We benchmarked that against some other local districts and, you know, financial consultants, so I'll work with Lumita on that one.
A good framework for that, actually, just speaking from experience, is we already have minimum spend authorizations for the superintendent. So, ten percent of any fund or, ten percent of any fund that exceeds the superintendent's existing authorization is probably the way.
Yeah, I've had a vision of here are the fourteen changes that we need to do this month that all exceeded ten percent. Any other questions about this, about DC?
Next up, we have Policy DJV, Expense Reimbursement. This policy states that authorized employees are eligible for expense reimbursements incurred as part of their assigned duties. It explicitly acknowledges the value of employees participating in professional learning that is aligned to the district's vision, mission, and strategic plan. It calls for adherence to reimbursement rates of state or federal travel regulations, approval by the employee supervisor and superintendent or designated, and the expectation of good stewardship of funds. In addition to travel expenses, Policy DJV allows for authorized reimbursements for approved expenses aligned to the Georgia State Accounting Office and district's accounting procedures. Above any board input or feedback, which should be considered for revisions to the policy. Our final policy for board input as part of today's pre-work session is Policy DK, Student Fund Management. This policy states that funds collected for student activities shall be expended solely for the intended purpose of the school-related activity. Principals are responsible for the management of a school's student activity fund with monthly central office review and reconciliation of school checking accounts. Policy DK includes safeguards such as requiring a counter-signature for checks over ten thousand dollars. It requires daily deposit of student activity funds whenever possible, with next-day deposit required when the day of deposit is not possible. It outlines the requirement of audit trails and itemized receipts for cash collection purposes. At this time, I'd like to invite any board input or feedback that should be considered for revisions to the policy.
What surprised me a little bit about this policy is that this seems to be sort of basic fiscal management requirement for, you know, any petty cash type.
Anything that comes in.
Yeah. So, will we?
It doesn't mean we weren't doing it, we're codifying it now at the policy level. And then, of course, our regulations things will support how it is done through the regulations, but because the policy didn't exist, it was one of those that in the policy audit, it's like, whoa, what everyone else has is, we didn't have this codified, so we need to go ahead and get into the policy.
But presumably, this is all already correctly booked, it is all already able to be audited and probably routinely audited, or, okay?
Yeah, so actually, student fund management is law, the way in which we are supposed to, what we're supposed to do with it. It's just we were missing policy in that, and what I will say, and this is just in general, we did recently have a third-party financial health assessment with recommendations on the ways in which we need to continue to do this work around our financial policies and also our regulations. So, say for example, we just talked about expense reimbursement as a policy. What is the regulation that goes with that regarding travel? Because as we implement that type of regulation, then we're able to really put in more spending control, which ultimately, you find additional money that goes towards a competitive compensation package. And so, this is the start around our financial policies, but this does not mean that it's the end. This is similar to what you did last year, which is, what is a must-have right now? Because it's best practice, and we really do need to have it on the books.
Got it. I didn't want that comment about it going towards a competitive compensation package to be lost in the shirm and drama of the conversation. So, thank you for being explicit about that.
It'll be very explicit throughout the upcoming month.
Any final questions? Thank you, Ms. Lynch.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, so, thank you so much, staff, for that presentation, we can now move into the work session.
All right. So we'll adjourn the pre-work session. We'll go into the work session. Thank you for joining us. We recognize this is only our third time combining a work session and a board meeting. Hopefully, our constituents are adjusting. Once again, an example of how we create a more effective and efficient organization. We'll continue with the finance theme with a few work session presentations.
Yes, thank you. Chair Herndon, I would like to call on Ms. Lomita Brum, our Chief Financial Officer, for a presentation of our fiscal year '25 proposed priorities and calendar.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Chair, Dr. Solton, esteemed members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Whitaker, community and colleagues. This is the proposed budget calendar for fiscal year '25. As the link on the district website located on the finance page, titled Budget Feedback Link, which gives all stakeholders an opportunity to provide input and feedback on the fiscal year 2025 budget. This evening meeting will serve as the first meeting or kick-off for the fiscal year 2025 budget. To ensure the budget has all of the information, to ensure the Board has all of the information and data required to make informed budget decisions, the budget process will include multiple presentations, including this evening's presentation of school allotment guidelines and projections, and a presentation this month on salary and benefit comparisons to surrounding districts. Fiscal year '24 mid-year budget amendment will be presented in December. An overview presentation of East Flock City will occur in January. Additionally, a budget discussion from the Governor's Office regarding changes in QBE funding traditionally begins in January. New this year will be a presentation from the Tax Commissioner in February. This presentation will give us an overview and forecast on property values in the city of Decatur. I will also present in February the annual five-year budget history review and the fiscal year '25 preliminary budget, which will be built based off of board charging and information received from the Governor of the state budget. In March, I will present draft two as needed of the proposed fiscal year '25 budget. The State and Federal Programs Department will present the Board with a presentation on the use of state and federal grant funds in March. The Board will tentatively approve the fiscal year '25 budget in April. Two public budget hearings, the final approval and adoption of the fiscal year '25 budget, and tentative approval of the military rate will take place in May. Three military rate hearings, and the final adoption of the military rate will occur in June. This calendar provides an overview of the budget process, however, it is not inclusive of every activity. Budget presentations will be made throughout the process to all stakeholders, including community members, school leadership teams, staff, and council meetings. Ongoing collaboration with budget managers will be conducted to review, analyze, and justify all fiscal year '25 budget requests. The tentative budget will be listed on the district's website and advertised in the local newspaper, The Chain. The budget process will be transparent, and all stakeholders will have an opportunity to hear presentations and provide input and feedback. Any questions on the calendar? The draft budget parameters serve as a guideline for budget development. The number one parameter around the fiscal year '25 budget is a balanced budget, which means the fiscal year '25 revenues shall exceed or equal the fiscal year. Other parameters include seeking alternative funding resources such as grants and donations to supplement the district funds, maintaining a fund balance to present as justified in board policy, setting a military rate that ensures the district can fund the resources needed to accomplish the strategic plan, allocating resources based on the district's four strategic accelerators, maintaining a competitive compensation structure for all employees. The unfunded mandate for half increases will be built into the fiscal year '25 budget. Ensuring that we are maximizing QBE funding, the colder scheduling, and staff allotment will be one of the reasons we identify cost savings. Investing in a financial and HR system will also be a resource that will eventually result in identifying cost savings. Incorporate transparency into the budget process throughout modified zero-based budgeting, which will start the budget process at zero and require all programs, schools, and departments to justify their budget requests, which will be thoroughly analyzed to determine alignment with district strategic plans into identified costs. If there are additional board priorities, I will add those to the budget parameters.
Just a quick comment for the public, and actually, this is probably directed more into the schools themselves. A zero-based budget is a difficult process. And so I think.
It's modified.
Yeah, it's even modified. Uh, it's, you know, apologies upfront. But when we talk about competitive compensation, when we talk about teacher pay, when we talk about finding the capital to deploy to ensure that we are highly competitive with other districts, that's where it comes from. And so this work is going to be worth it, I think, is what I just want to say. It can be tough. And I just want to acknowledge that upfront, that it's a ton of work on you in this room. But thank you so much for doing it, and it's, I think, we'll all feel great when we're done.
I have one comment, not particular question. I very much appreciate that the strategic accelerators are listed right next to the parameters of the draft. And I think as a board chair, I want the superintendent and the executive staff to come forward with things that meet student success in all areas and force us to say no to funding them. There's no opportunity, there's no idea that this community would not rally around if it led to student success and equity and inclusive organization that is effective and excellent. And so I appreciate that it's there. I want it to remain there as we go through this process about what we fund and what we will continue to fund.
Okay, thank you. So Chair Herndon, next month, we will act as a, as this calendar, as an actual board item for approval. So it'll go into the actual work session. So, not work session, but board meeting for action, for approval. So, um.
Thank you, Ms. Brum.
So now I will actually ask Ms. Walker to join Ms. Brum for a presentation of our FY '25 School Allotment Guidelines and School Projections.
Good evening and again. As we prepare for the fiscal year '25 budget season, it is time to look at how schools will be staffed and budgeted. One of the primary responsibilities of a Board of Education is to adopt a balanced budget that adheres to state law provisions and supports the district's strategic plan. The School Allocation Guide creates a budget that aligns with cultivating and retaining quality professionals by following allotment guidelines that are equitable district-wide. Enhancing equitable guidelines, the process contributes to the organization's effectiveness and excellence by utilizing natural sustainable practices to allocate school personnel and operating schools. Additionally, the school allotment process is physically responsible with formulas and ratios which provide a transparent process for understanding school allotment and funding. The school allotment process is student-focused and allocates funding to schools based on enrollment and student needs. In addition to the funds allocated to schools and departments such as teaching and learning, technology, student services, and special education are also allocated funds to support student needs. The School Allotment Guidelines provides a resource for principals, teachers, and all stakeholders to understand how schools are staffed and give principals autonomy and flexibility on the use of their allocated operational funds. Specifically, the School Allotment Guidelines will serve as the primary document for understanding the formulas and the guidelines used to develop a student-based budget. The document will identify student-teacher ratios in the process of building schools' operating budget. Considering the district's personnel is 87% of the budget, and school personnel is 59% of the 87%, it is imperative to have an allotment process that is equitable, clear, physically responsible, and easy to understand. Each school is assigned a non-personnel operating budget. In preparation of the fiscal year '25 budget, an analysis of the per pupil spend was conducted for the last two years to get an average per pupil amount per school. The analysis showed that majority of schools were spending significantly less than what was budgeted. For fiscal year '22, the column highlighted in green shows the per pupil budget, and the column highlighted in yellow shows the per pupil actual amount spent. So in fiscal year '22, Claremont, for example, was allocated a budget of $35,656. When you divide the allocated budget by the number of enrolled students, the per pupil budget highlighted in green is $197. At the end of the year, the amount of Claremont budget that was actually spent in fiscal year '22 was $24,749. When you divide the actual amount spent by 181, which is the number of enrolled students, the per pupil actual highlighted in yellow is $137, which is significantly less than the amount budgeted, and means that $50 per student are a total of $10,860 was left remaining in Claremont's budget at the end of fiscal year '22. At the end of the year, when funds are remaining in school budgets or in any district budget, those funds go back to the fund balance, which increases the fund balance. And as you know, the fund balance determines the district's financial capability to fund additional compensation, new initiatives, and cover expenses associated with unexpected emergencies such as a pandemic. Overall, for school budgets for fiscal year '22, too, the total amount budgeted per pupil was $202, as shown in the last row. The average amount spent per pupil was $136. This means for fiscal year '22, the schools were overbudgeted, and approximately $352,000 from funds budgeted to schools went back to the district's fund balance. For fiscal year '23, schools were budgeted $991,934, which equates to $180 budgeted per pupil. The actual spend was $649,771, which equates to $118 per pupil. For fiscal year '23, the schools were overbudgeted, and approximately $342,000 from funds budgeted, funds budgeted to schools went back to the district's fund balance. Currently, the budgeted per pupil expenditures for fiscal year '24 varies per school. School budgets have rolled over from year to year without adjustment. And looking at the lower elementary schools, the budgeted per pupil expenditures, as shown in green, range from $171 to $265. The upper elementary school budgeted per pupil expenditures range from $184 to $216. The middle school fiscal year '24 budgeted per pupil expenditures is $225, and the high schools is $170. When you start building the fiscal year '25 budget and take into consideration the past few years of overbudgeting at the school level, declining enrollment, and unfunded state mandated increases such as cap costs, we must put parameters around budget allocation. For fiscal year '25, we will be using a modified zero-based budgeting process, which means operating budgets will not automatically roll from getting here. We will analyze all budgets, and each request will require justification. The proposed preliminary per pupil amount for all schools for fiscal year '25, this amount is equitable, and that all students will receive operating funding based on their enrollment. If it is determined that additional funds are required based on student's needs, there will be justification to support the increase in the budget. There will be a savings of approximately $280,000 from budgeting schools appropriately in excess. This chart shows the historical school year spend, current budget, and proposed per pupil budget per school as previously discussed. Based on the actual spending trend, the proposed fiscal year '25 budget of $145 per pupil exceeds majority of the school's past spending trend. And again, departments are also allocated funds to support student's needs. Additionally, justification for increased funding based on student needs will be considered. Principals will have autonomy to work with their school leadership team and stakeholders to budget their per pupil expenditures in the best interest of the students. Ms. Walker will now further discuss staff and allocation, frequently asked questions, and next we go.
Good afternoon, Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Solton, board members, and Dr. Whitaker. Now we will look at the proposed FY '25 CSD teacher-student ratios alongside the state funded ratios for K-12 general education. To look at allotments for the upcoming fiscal year, we must understand that the quality-based educational formula, also known as the QBE formula, and allotments are connected. The QBE formula is the funding formula used for determining the amount of state education funds for the school district that the school district inherits. QBE sets out the provisions for educational funding for grades kindergarten through 12. Free K is not funded through QBE. The funding sizes are essentially a starting point for districts when considering allotments. It is advisable for a district to strive to meet or be above a minimal funding sizes. With that being said, CSD has always valued a local and small, small community school. So we continue to prioritize the operation of smaller local schools. However, it must be noted that the smaller the class is, it comes at an increased cost due to staffing, the higher number of locally funded staff over what the state. Additionally, in the School Allotment Guide, schools have a baseline staff for essential operations, such as school administrators, instructional support staff, and clarifications according to the building. Certain intervention positions such as early intervention, remedial education program teachers, as well as state and federal program teachers like E.S.L., gifted and special education teachers will be based on STE allotments and QBE formulas to maximize staff. So what information is needed for principals and school leadership teams? The School Allotment Guide is to ensure an equitable process for allocating funding to schools. So here are a few frequently asked questions that may assist in the process. How would the School Allotment Guide be used? Well, it would be used to allocate staffing according to projected enrollment based upon appropriate staffing formula. When will principals and SLTs learn about it? We will have meetings held in December, and principals will receive their building allocation and will discuss any concerns that they may have. What training will be provided to school administrators? Also during the month of December, during our admin staff, principals will receive additional training on surplusing and leveling and how that process will work. What will change management look like for this process? There will be a consistent and effective communication of what staffing allocation will be for FY '25. The principals will receive talking points during, for their intent to stay conversations with staff. There will be clear communication to teachers to ensure their understanding of what surplusing and the leveling process will be. And last but not least, finance and HR will have a collaborative partnership with principals and department leaders for equitable outcomes. Here's a timeline of what is next for our staffing allocation. In November, we are here at the Board of Education meeting presenting the Staffing Allocation Guidelines presentation. In December of 2023, we will schedule individual meetings with principals, and at that time, again, they will receive their projected staffing allocations for FY '25. In January 2024, we project employment contracts will go out for FY '25, and non-renewal conversations will happen at that time as well. In February 2024, the internal transfer and hiring process will begin, as principals are ensuring their buildings will be at full capacity at the beginning of the school year. And in March 2024, the staff who are deciding to not resign to CSD, they will submit their resignation or retirement letters at that time. And then our principals will be given a clear picture of what their staffing will be. And then our principals will be given a clear picture of what their staffing will be and that will assist in the surplusing process. This time, Ms. Broom and I will entertain any questions as you may.
So I had a couple of questions. The first one was on the slide that showed the per pupil funding. Could I just, when we say, let's say we're saying a hundred and forty-five dollars per student, obviously that's not the entire budget. Can you just paint for us the picture of what that hundred and forty-five per student is going towards?
Yes, so the things that currently are in their budget are obviously some supplies, paper, things of that nature. Also professional development that is paid for by a vendor that would be local school, even travel expenses, things of that nature. So when we think about a of a hundred and forty-five dollars per child, there would still be some funding that they and so one of the things that I have spoken with Ms. Broom about is making sure that there is an instructional reserve, that if there is something that they need that is not necessarily already allocated, there would be an avenue for them to garner that support.
What I find interesting is how variable that number in the overall elementary. And so it would be interesting to know, well, for example, Claremont's a Title I school, so I could see how potentially it would need a higher dollar per pupil amount than another one. But to get some visibility into what that variability is, I think would be an interesting exploration.
Yes, so we will provide additional support based upon at-risk numbers. So at-risk numbers are typically provided based upon students who are, percentage of students who are free and reduced sludge, percentage of students who are ESOL, percentage of students that are students with disabilities. When those types of additional designations happen, that is when there is access to additional funding to support. And so that's above and beyond the per pupil expenditure.
And then my second question was around the funding ratios, the DOE funding ratios versus our ratios. Yeah, it's right here. I just want to make sure that I under, I read this as grade K, the DOE funds us to a ratio of fifteen students to one teacher and we have twenty-three students to one teacher? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, so essentially, when the DOE funds you, they're not funding you at the salary that they are, we actually pay. They're saying you're allocated that teacher. Know that our local dollars pay on top of what that, what that amount is in order to have the compensation to be in the city of Decatur. I will say that certain grade bands do present a bit of a pause for me at the moment. So right now, we're looking at the high school master schedule explicitly. So in order at the high school, in order to fund a teacher, there needs to be twenty-three children in that class. If not, we're not funding it unless there is a class that is, say, for example, and this is for general education. If this is a special education class or if it's a gifted class, where the ratio is different, then it's different. But this is for your traditional classroom. And if there, if there is a smaller number of students in that class than what that ratio is in that first column, that class, that teacher is not paid for. It's not funded. So the takeaway is K through three, we are well-funded as far as our ratio. When it comes to the high school, that's where the pause really is. And you'll see the results of that human resource maximization outcomes at our retreat. So basically, the result of us looking at the master schedule at the high school to see per classroom, per dollar, where would savings be made if we utilized a different master schedule? It's, once again, everything we're talking about is a part of the compensation strategy.
Yep, understood. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And where will this kind of body be published? Is it going to be on assembly and then will, when will it be up so that parents can look at it?
So, yes, so the school allocation guidelines, we will look for actual approval next month when we bring the priorities in the calendar. Everything will come together so you can vote and approve. And then we will publish it on the finance website as well as it being in assembly, as other documents are. And we will also adjust our website to be a little more transparent and a little more user-friendly. So the finance page will be able to house everything and including the budget calendar, the budget plan app parameters, the school allotment guidelines, ultimately that budget book, and every presentation that is made between now and when we have that final approval in. All of that will live on our website.
Thank you, Ms. Broom. Dr. Whitaker, Ms. Broom's still with us, is that correct?
Yeah, she's still there. She's still there. Yes, she is. Now, Ms. Broom will actually discuss a human resource strategy to help us meet some of our key performance indicators, which is about increasing our revenue efficiency, this budgeted, the actual, all of the things that we're talking about. There is a human resource strategy that I think will be helpful.
And once again, the finance department has analyzed current job responsibilities and job positions and has determined the need for an executive finance position to ensure equitable distribution of job responsibilities. Currently, the department consists of the chief financial officer, a part-time administrative assistant, one coordinator, and four specialists, payroll, purchasing, account, payable, accounting, and accounting. In order to increase organizational effectiveness and excellence, the finances increase leadership and executive levels report. In the last three years, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board has increased reporting requirements of GATB ninety-six and GATB eighty-seven. Additionally, the finance department is committed to the creation and sustainability of excellence and transparency and decision-making. Based on the business needs and responsibilities of the department, a controller position will provide a level of competency and skills required to successfully oversee and enhance the department's current responsibilities. A controller is an executive level position that is instrumental in the planning, organizing, and directing of financial responsibility. An analysis of finance department in the metro Atlanta area and district of similar five shows that majority executive director position with responsibilities aligned with those of a controller. Some of the controller's main job responsibilities will be to supervise and manage the payroll and accounting department. Currently, the department is managed by the CFO. The controller will also be responsible for facilitating the audit in conjunction with the CFO, financial reporting, cash analysis, and capital assets. The position would also contribute to a significant increase in financial transparency and processes to increase financial monitoring and control. The proposed controller position will be placed on the director's scale with an average annual salary and benefit of one hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. For fiscal year twenty-four, a part-time administrative assistant for finance and a part-time administrative assistant for H.R. was budgeted at an annual cost of approximately fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Neither part-time position has been built and will not be built. And funds budgeted for the position will be reallocated to the controller's position. The controller's salary for this month, considering January will be the earliest this position to be built, will be seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. With the reallocation of the twelve-month budget of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars for the administrative assistant, the fiscal impact for fiscal year twenty-four will be three thousand, eight thousand. If approved, this is the revised organizational chart.
Yeah, I couldn't support this more. This is a really important, I think, a really, really important thing for us to have. I just had a really quick question. Is, does all of the procurement protocols sit under purchasing or is procurement management in a different area?
It sits under purchasing right now. It sits under purchasing. And when you think about authorization to spend, when you think about the thresholds, when you think about what our process is when we are going out for a request for a proposal versus a request for information versus qualifications, all of those types of things really are the work, it's owned by the CFO and it's managed by the CFO, but a lot of that should come through the purchasing specialist. And just so that you know, it's not typically a specialist because that, those things that I just referenced really are more executive level work, but yeah.
So that's a future we look at.
I'm not going to keep adding, I'm not going to keep adding, but what I will say is that I've mentioned to you all very much so, DJE as a policy and a regulation around contracting and purchasing is something that we really need to hold firmly to. And so those are some other policies or potentially regulations that you'll be seeing. You'll be seeing, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Broom.
All right, Chair Hunden. I would like to call on Jennifer Burton, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and she will discuss the human resource strategy to address key findings from our ninety-day review, the redesign of the multi-tiered support system.
Good evening, Board Chair Hunden, Vice Chair Dr. Sultan, esteemed Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Gemma Whitaker. NTSF stands for Multi-Tiered System of Support. An effective NTSF framework ensures that all students receive support so they reach their full potential. During Dr. Whitaker's first ninety days, it became clear that our NTSF framework needed to be redesigned. Through school canvas visits and staff interviews, we found inconsistency in how much time was being allocated for intervention. In some schools, students were receiving twenty minutes of tier-three interventions twice per week. But in fact, state guidelines call for tier-three students to receive at least thirty minutes of intervention services four to five times per week. In some schools, we have students receiving no intervention. We know that our NTSF school leads and school leaders need clarity and understanding the essential components of NTSF and their role in facilitating a team to support intervention work. And we know that our teachers need clarity and training on the effective implementation of prescribed interventions. CSD needs a reporting system to increase transparency with current status of interventions among students. This includes number of intervention plans per student and progress over time through data. It's critical that our families, staff, and district leaders know how students are responding to prescribed interventions so we can make adjustments. Analysis of our subgroup data shows significant disproportionality between our black subgroup and all other students. Through a streamlined NTSF structure, students who are underperforming are quickly identified and monitored closely to increase student achievement across all subgroups and the nation of existing resources with supplementary resources. We then will have success for all students. These findings show we need an NTSF director. Our NTSF director will lead professional development and database decision-making. Our NTSF director will provide trainings and evidence-based interventions and progress monitoring data analysis. Our NTSF director will coach our NTSF leads alongside the NTSF coordinator and NTSF district coach to improve Our NTSF director will develop systems and processes to increase accountability with data collection and intervention fidelity, share reports to inform the CSD Board of Education Superintendent and other stakeholders, and provide guidance and information resources to increase school and community understanding of NTSF best practices. Our NTSF director will implement structures to ensure upholding of the law and state board policies pertaining to intervention framework, a framework for using database processes, and a schedule for monitoring intervention and data collection fidelity. Having an NTSF director will require an additional one hundred forty-three thousand, nine hundred sixty-one dollars annually. To assist with offsetting this additional earning eliminated seventy thousand dollars worth of ARC training this year, which would cover all but one thousand nine hundred eighty dollars of the NTSF director's salary for their first half-year. While this position will be a recurring expense, the reduction in child fine concerns and ensuring the proper progression of referrals for students with disabilities will be a financial savings for CSD. Our student show, our student data shows we must take immediate action to ensure students are receiving effective, timely, and appropriate interventions. We require a highly skilled person to redesign our NTSF process to ensure we are compliant with the law and state guidelines, but most importantly, that we meet the needs of all of our students. What questions do you have?
Two quick questions, and I think really one's more of a comment. I do very much appreciate the effort to make it as balanced and budget-neutral as possible. But at least speaking for myself, I am extremely comfortable viewing this as an incremental cost if necessary. I think this is an absolute must. This is an area where an investment is crucially and critically required. And so all I appreciate is budget-neutral. I, this is one of the areas where I would not feel like, I would feel very comfortable going to the public justifying for this kind of a disposition. I did not appreciate how much our challenges in the NTSF process contribute to our blaring equity issues that we have. I mean, this is directly correlated to the OSS ISS issues that we have in some of the schools and the support that the kids that need it are not getting. The quick question that I had was, you had also mentioned school leads, NTSF leads, coordinators, coaches. Are those also vacant positions? Are those the sorts of positions that this director would be sufficiently budgeted to hire if necessary? Because I think it's a bigger problem than one person, right? And so how, what's the thinking in terms of how all of this happens at the school level as well?
So these are not new positions. The director is the only new position. At the district level, the director directly manages the coordinator and the district coach. The principal manages the school-based lead. However, the director is responsible for ensuring that we have a really strong system and structure in place so our NTSF leads know exactly what they're doing. And so that's our gap, right? Really strong system and structure, training that really clearly outlines what we need to do to meet the needs of kids. And once we have that, we've got the folks ready to put that in action. It's a, there's an information and a system gap right now.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, Ms. Burton will remain. And now she will share, explain some
And now she will share, explain some ELA and then math advanced coursework that will be added to grade six through 10 next year.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of sharing our plan to expand advanced coursework offerings for our students. During Dr. Whitaker's listening sessions, we repeatedly heard a request for more rigorous coursework options for our students. CSD offers AP and IB courses in 10th through 12th grade, but currently, we do not offer honors courses, which we believe are a runway to college-level course. While we are hearing this request from our stakeholders, we also received updated guidance from the DOE on approved gifted service models and rules we must follow to receive funding for gifted services. If we do not make adjustments to our current course offerings, we will lose an estimated $1.7 million in funding per year. Here is our solution. We will add honors courses in grade six through 10 in ELA and math. These courses will satisfy the gifted service model requirements given by the state and offer a more rigorous course option for all students. We will continue the current gifted cluster model in science and social studies, thus maximizing our funding of off-screen course models in all four core academic courses. Honors coursework is not needed in 11th and 12th grade because we offer four levels of coursework already, the standard course, AP, IB standard level, and IB high level. So here you see the math progression. We've added sixth grade and seventh grade honors. In eighth grade, students have the standard level course along with the algebra enhanced course, which is a combination of eighth grade and algebra concepts and connections. Algebra concepts and connections is what we all know as Algebra I. In high school, we have honors, algebra concepts and connections, and honors geometry. This is our ELA progression. We have honors ELA in sixth through 10th grade. In 10th grade, the honors course wasn't technically needed because we are also offering an AP course in 10th grade starting next year. However, we wanted to continue to offer an advanced option for students who want more challenge but might not be ready for a college-level course quite yet. All students will have the option of registering for an honors course. Families will be given a course catalog that includes course descriptions and a decision guide with academic readiness indicators for each course that includes Georgia milestone scores, grades, and student interest and motivation in that content area, and math or STAR scores. Remember that this is the last year we will be taking math. Next year, all students K through 12 will take STAR, which allows us to streamline our assessment platform for the universal screener and dyslexia screener. Because the honors courses will include more rigorous coursework, it is proposed that students will be awarded a .5 quality point for completing honors coursework in high school, which you'll hear more about during the presentation on IHA. This proposal aligns with similar-sized districts in the metro area. I've already met with the staff at the middle and high school to share these updates. My team is updating the course catalogs, which will be shared with families at the end of November. We will post an interactive Q and A survey on the CSD homepage where families can type questions and our team can quickly and efficiently respond. During the first week of December, we will host parent webinars for middle and high school families, which will be recorded and posted on the CSD and school websites. We have adjusted the timeline for course requests at the high school and middle school to begin in January. We will begin communicating with rising sixth-grade families in a similar fashion in February. Writing course syllabi and teacher training will occur in the spring, and if needed, paid opportunities during the summer. By expanding our course options, we are not only giving students increased access to more rigorous coursework, but also meeting students' academic needs as well as maintaining our current funding. Have any questions?
What was the feedback that you received when you presented this to the staff at the high school and the middle school?
So really mixed. Some students in science, social studies, and world language. And then others have questions about, you know, well, who will get to teach this? How will this be scheduled? More kind of school-level decisions, but, but it was a, it was a mixed group of saying, you know, kind of, how will this impact me and my workload? And then, hey, can we, can we do this for the other classes too? So mixed.
Why can't we do it? Just like languages.
I, I, I will say this. This is a list. This is a list. So you, you're, you're starting with ELA and math, and that's a natural progression. I, I am familiar with having honors, you know, sciences as well as social studies courses as well, but let's do this parent.
That's one step at a time.
Thank you.
Loud and clear.
Thank you, Norah.
I think it's a great option. I like that there's so many different options. I also like that the parents are, are given guidelines for what they think are best for their child, and they let us remember that a big criticism in the past has been how hard it was to get into, in on the pathway to things like accelerated math, and we tried to make some modifications. I think people still felt like it was too math-focused, but now you've got multiple on-ramps and multiple off-ramps at different points in time. You can, you know, decide what you think is best. So I think, and you've got obviously that, you know, grade bump where you get a little incentive if you want to give it a try. So I think it's, I think it's a great place to start, and you can be in one honors course or the next. And I like it to start from the middle school, because I think sometimes kids need a little bit of a, of a push or a little bit of a, of a, some training before they get into high school, and then they're flooded with a lot of these advanced courses and coursework. So I think it's a great place to start.
How about it? Thank you, Ms. Burton, for the presentation. Moving on to policy.
Yes. Chair Herndon, I would like to call on, this is Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff to review policies for first read.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we will have three policies on the agenda for the work session. These policies were discussed in pre-work last month. The recommendation will be made is that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education accept each of these policies for first read. They will then be available for public comments for assembly. First, we have policy KM, Visitors to Schools. Based on board feedback, the policy was reviewed to ensure that the provisions for all visitors, so that like sign-in and badging would encapsulate school constituted events such as parent-teacher conferences. The review found the provisions were not time-bound to the instructional day. However, the word "any" was added to describe the edit to the policy. Is there any discussion around policy KM, or may I read the recommendation?
Don't hear any.
The recommendation is being made that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education accept policy KM, Visitors to Schools for first read.
So do I have a motion to approve the recommendation? Is that you?
Yes. That's you.
That's me. Okay. Policy KM, Visitors to School for First Read, do I have a motion?
I still move.
Board Member Utz makes the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Light makes second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We wait.
Just wait. She can go to the next one, and then we'll just do them all.
Sounds good. Recommendation for IKB?
So, second, we do have policy IKB, Controversial Issues. This policy states a strong commitment to support intellectual honesty in the classroom. It also indicates board support of our teachers. The list removes the repetitive line stating that teachers who in good faith comply with the policy will not be subject to disciplinary action. So it was in there twice, we made it in there once, and that was the only change. Any discussion about that? All right, then I'm gonna go to IHA and I'll come back for the recommendation. So finally, we have policy IHA, Grading Systems. This policy was discussed in pre-work last month. Before presenting the recommendation, I will share some additional information about the revisions that have been made to this policy. Surveys to gather feedback on the initial draft of the grading policy were made publicly available to stakeholders. We had 753 total responses collected, and that included 408 parent responses, 104 staff responses, 173 secondary student responses, and 68 elementary student responses. Of these, 407 responses included open-ended qualitative feedback. We are very grateful to everyone who took time to provide their input. SAG carefully analyzed quantitative results to better understand perceptions of clarity and agreement with the content of the policy. SAG also carefully analyzed qualitative responses to identify themes within and across stakeholder groups. At the highest level, there was overall agreement with the K through 5 grading scale remaining as a 1 through 4 scale. That's not to say everyone wanted that, but overall agreement. There was also overall agreement with changing the 6 through 12 grading scale to a 100-point scale. On the other hand, the results also made it clear that additional clarity was needed around the IB, MYP, and DP course grades as well as on retakes. As the feedback was analyzed, it became evident that there were several points that we needed to better emphasize and clarify. These included the IB, PYP, MYP, and DP, DP programs will remain in the City Schools of Decatur. There is no plan to move away from our IB authorization. The 0 to 100 grading scale being proposed for grade 6 through 12, and the 1 through 4 scale being proposed to remain at grades K through 5 are allowable and compliant with IB. As part of our initial research, we looked at grading policies of surrounding districts with IB schools, as well as the U.S. News and World Report top-ranked IB schools in the nation. The 0 to 100 scale secondary levels was commonly used among these schools. Also important for us to clarify that at the policy level, the what is being addressed. We received feedback asking for clarity that will be included at the regulation and/or operating guideline level. This is because regulation addresses the how. It provides specificity on how content included in policy will be implemented. We want to assure stakeholders that their feedback was not ignored for the revision policy IHA being presented tonight. Instead, feedback on how the grading policy will be included at the regulation and/or operating guideline level. In addition to feedback about the content of the initial draft of the grading policy, we received feedback about the impact of change and the need for communication. Superintendent Dr. Whitaker's 90-day findings about the need for change management processes, including ongoing transparent two-way communication, is clear. We are committed to these practices and will remain sensitive to the impact of the change on teachers, students, and families. The feedback we gathered on policy IHA did inform the revisions that are being presented today. In this version, you will see some additional language around IB, specifically stating in this section that the student grades will be reported on the traditional 0 to 100 scale. For a diploma program or DP, it is stated that courses may include assignments graded using the IBDP rubric that can be factored into the traditional grading average as outlined in the course syllabi. Specifics on how such calculations may occur will be addressed at the regulation level. Another change you will see in the revised version of policy IHA is the inclusion of a weighted GPA, a 0.5 bonus for honors courses. This change was made, you heard earlier today, detailing our need to offer additional advanced coursework opportunities in the form of honors courses. There were adjustments made to the language in the chart in the high school grade point averages section reflecting these updates. The most recent version also up fixed the chart just recently to eliminate the previously version that included the D. This change was made to align with Georgia State Board Rule 160-4-2-0.13, which establishes 70 as a minimum passing score. There was a newer adjustment made to that. The revisions to policy IHA also include some adjustments to the retake bullet. For example, rather than including a maximum number of retakes, the policy now reads that students should be afforded the opportunity for, at a minimum, one retake on standards not mastered. This aligns with our value of evaluating student progress and growth. Finally, the K through 5, 1 through 4 descriptors received updated language to replace chunk of learning with future learning, based on board member feedback received in November. We recognize that not all feedback was captured at the policy level and that stakeholders will still have questions about how it will be implemented. We will begin to develop a draft regulation this month to support the policy once it is adopted. Specifically, as examples, regulation may include exactly how retakes will be administered. It will address concepts related to grade calculations such as assignment weights, formative versus summative assessments, and zeros. It can provide additional clarity into how IB rubrics will be used. Is there any discussion, or shall I read the recommendation?
But one quick question. Is it, is it ultimately going to be a result of these grading changes that a reasonably competent parent that has an Excel spreadsheet in front of them will be able to figure out they expect a grade of their kid if they have the grades that come along? Let me, let me clarify. Right now, that's not possible.
Yes. And so, so yes, they will be able to, on a 0 to 100 grading scale, when you clarify assignment weights and formatives and assessments, you will be able to calculate what a grade would be, you know?
Okay. Thank you.
What was the, I appreciate you sharing the general tenor of the feedback. What was the staff feedback like of the 104 responses to this policy?
Yes, we analyzed by theme, and I think a lot of the things that came up. And we also went to both Beacon Hill and Decatur High School, and Ms. Newton Scott helped facilitate some discussions there as well. Overall, the themes that really emerged were around the need for the change management, right? So yes, there was some content, but really what was resounding was, either we felt that there's been a lot of change, we feel like there's been a lot of confusion, just what is it, why again? So we're gonna have to do some processes around, you know, training them, buying in, doing the why, and helping understand, continuing to clarify the misconceptions, because there are still the how that have to be worked out as well, so all of their questions aren't answered at this time. But I would say that most of their feedback was around kind of the, okay, what does this mean for me? And how are we gonna get there?
Overall, there's not a majority of those responses that are against the 100-point scale or any...
No, it averaged above the, the neutral on, from the teachers on all of the, on all of the prompts there.
Okay.
All right, shall I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
All right, I'm gonna start with IHA, is that okay? That's the one we just did.
Sure.
The recommendation being made is that City Schools of Decatur Board of Education accept policy IHA, Grading Systems for First Read.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept policy IHA, Grading System, First Read? Board Member Utz makes the motion. Do I have a second? Jane Johnson Davis with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and then now I will read the recommendation for policy IKB. The recommendation being made is that City Schools of Decatur Board of Education accept policy IKB, Controversial Issues for First Read.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept policy? Yes. For first read.
Move to approve, um, policy IKB.
Board Member Johnson Davis makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You, Board Member Utz makes the second. Any discussion? You, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. And then we also do need to vote on KM. It was already approved for a recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept policy? Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept policy KM visitors to school for first read? Mr. Utz made the motion, Ms. White made the second. Any discussion of that motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The work session for today, we will come back at 5:00 PM for our board meeting.
Time, we will begin with a moment of silence following by the pledge of allegiance. This time I ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. Now I ask all that are able to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, into the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Educators in a safe and inviting environment. We will now move to the second item on the agenda. Agenda revisions. Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
Oh, since you approved today's agenda.
Thank you. Wait, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hux. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Our next agenda item is the approval of minutes from our previous board meetings. Do I have a motion to approve October's regular board minutes?
I move to approve October's regular board minutes.
Davis makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Wait, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We're now going to move forward with our other agenda items. We will start with staff and student recognition. Dr. Whitaker, I see that there are a couple of people in the audience this evening.
Yes, quite a few, yes Chair Herndon. At this time, our Chief of School Performance Karen Newton-Scott and Jennifer Burton, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning will come to the podium to present some special presentations. I understand also, we have our DEF Executive Director Ricky Hyde and DEF Board Chair Cal Morris that will also assist, and please do, with this evening's recognition.
Thank you Board Chair Herndon. Okay, that's better, right? Thank you Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Sultan, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Whitaker. Today I have the pleasure of making two presentations. The two presentations I will begin with are the Good Samaritan Awards. These awards are going to Chandler Gibson, a fifth grader at Fifth Avenue, and Tessa Hidner, a 12th grader at Decatur High School. Chandler and Tessa, can you please join us up front? On a typical school day, 10-year-old Chandler Gibson witnessed a classmate choking on an apple during lunch. Chandler revealed that just days prior, he had watched an instructional video of the Heimlich maneuver online. Motivated by this newfound knowledge, he swiftly intervened to assist his fellow classmates, preventing a potentially life-threatening event. Principal Hanson expressed that Chandler's proactive response came as no surprise, emphasizing his consistent role as a leader on campus and his self-motivated nature. You can find a featured story on Chandler that aired on 11 Alive News on that news station's website. The school community extends its commendation to Chandler for his heroic act of service, and I also was Chandler's mother's teacher when she was so great. So, I guess I'm like a grandma. September 11, Tessa was walking to school and while crossing the street with the school crossing guard, witnessed a hit-and-run accident involving the crossing guard. Tessa not only ensured that the crossing guards safe, also she not only ensured the crossing guards safety, but also took immediate action by obtaining the license plate of the suspect's vehicle and providing a detailed description of the driver. Tessa is being recognized for displaying remarkable courage and quick thinking in a moment of crisis. Her excellent job of providing the details of the accident led to the driver's arrest. Tessa also received a certificate of appreciation from Mayor Patty Garrett on behalf of the city commission. Thank you, Tessa, for your heroic act of service. Please join me in giving both Tessa and Chandler a round of applause. Next presentation is to the Decatur High School Championship Cross Country team. These Bulldogs recently won the GHSA state meet. Decatur finished with a total of 54 points, 22 points ahead of the second-place team. Congratulations to Coach Souder, who is here, if you will wave, and her staff for Decatur Cross Country. This victory marks the fifth state championship in five years. The boys winning in 2021 as well as 2022. Over two consecutive wins, 2022 and 2023. We are proud of the awards that they have received and the tremendous individuals the program develops each year. At this time, we would like to recognize the place. A paper is missing. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much. As I call your name, if you will come up, Principal Throel has your certificate. Anna Blachek. Sophia D. Elena. Paige Chatham Stevens. Penelope Goble. Eileen Herman. Anna Longbridge. Maya Mykraut. Avril Payne. Leah Robertson. Kate Sherwood. And Margaret Welp. At this time, I would like to invite the members of the board and Dr. Whitaker to congratulate all of our exceptional students. We will take a moment to ensure that each student, each student group has a picture with the board before we proceed with the next presentation. Foundation along with Mr. Cal Morris. They are here and they are going to present each teacher with their certificate and plaque. Teachers, when I call your name, please come forward for your gift presentations and a photo with members of the board, Dr. Whitaker, and our DEF representatives. After your picture, please remain standing in the well so we can get a big group picture at the end. All right, we'll start with college heights, Bianca Cheedham. All right, we'll start with College Heights, Bianca Cheedam. Bianca is currently in her 12th year of teaching in her fifth at College Heights. She has been married to her husband, John, for almost 10 years. They have a fun-loving three-and-a-half-year-old daughter named Amelia, who is always on the go. She also attends College Heights. Her family has two dogs, Bella and Owen, and she loves to read, craft, and shop in her free time. Congratulations, Bianca Cheedam. From Clermont Elementary School, we have Corinne Jolly. Corinne's passion for, was inspired by her mother, a principal of a Montessori school in Haiti and a children's book opus. After earning a B.S. in marketing from Boston College, she discovered her true calling while teaching abroad in South Korea, leading her to pursue a master's degree in early childhood education from UGA. In her 13th year of teaching, Corinne, now in her second year at Clermont, not only serves as a classroom teacher, but also excels in her roles as an NTSS lead and EIP teacher. She's also the co-founder of Readers to Dreamers, a nonprofit promoting multicultural literature. Congratulations. Next up is Glenwood Elementary School, Anne Gilfoyle. Anne embarked on her teaching journey 35 years ago, teaching students in second, third, and sixth grade. For the past 15 years, she has been an integral part of City Schools of Decatur, teaching early intervention reading and math at Clermont from 2008 to 2017, and now at Glenwood. In 2017, her role expanded to NTSS co-chair. Beyond her dedication to education, Anne is an avid runner, enjoys playing golf, and participates in the string band during her spare time. Congratulations. From Oakhurst, we have Kelly Welchell. Kelly, an Oakhurst Owl teacher for nine years, has taught both second and kindergarten. Previously, she spent 12 years at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta in the emergency room and served eight years as a firefighter EMT with the DeKalb County Fire Department. Kelly holds an education degree from Georgia State University and certifications at ESOL and Orton-Gillingham. An Oakhurst Math Cultural Lead Teacher and PTA Staff Representative, she balances her professional commitments with outdoor activities and travels alongside her husband, daughter Abby Lynn, and dog Pepper. Congratulations. Westchester Elementary School, Brooke Nation. Graduating from the University of Georgia in 2001, Miss Nation began her teaching career in Athens, completing her master's degree simultaneously. In 2006, she joined City Schools of Decatur, captivated by the charm of Clermont Elementary during her first visit. Miss Nation dedicated a decade to teaching kindergarten and second grade at Clermont, where she served as a team lead and PTA representative and was honored as Teacher of the Year in 2009-10. After earning her EBS degree, she transitioned to Westchester Specialist, finding fulfillment in her multifaceted roles and considering Westchester her home away from home. Congratulations. Winona Park Elementary School, Rachel Sigmund. Rachel's passion for teaching emerged in second grade when she transformed her home into a makeshift classroom using her mother's ironing board as a teacher desk. After graduating with honors from GSU, joined Clermont Elementary in CSD. Over the course of 19 years in CSD, Rachel has thrived in various roles, including team lead, CBIS coach, and currently NTSS lead, demonstrating her dedication to education and the community she proudly serves. Congratulations. Fifth Avenue Elementary, John O'Keefe. John's career has spanned 23 years, engaging with students from various ages, cultures, and identities, including Australian, displaced, and indigenous communities. His educational philosophy centers around bringing inspired learning into the classroom, fostering skills of safety, risk-taking, joy, and self-confidence for lifelong development. John considers himself fortunate to discover aspects of himself in every student. Congratulations, John. Beacon Hill Middle School, Laura Strower. Strower, a devoted special education teacher focusing on students with intellectual disabilities, prioritizes their needs, and advocates for inclusion both inside and outside the classroom. She founded Bulldog Buddies, an inclusive club fostering meaningful interactions between neurotypical and differently-abled students. Miss Strower's impactful efforts extend to organizing MOID classrooms, demonstrating her commitment to differentiation, and creating authentic opportunities for diverse peer engagement. Congratulations. We have our Decatur High School Award winner Lena Hamilton, who is not in attendance tonight. Lena is a Boston native and Georgia resident, is a Black Teacher Project Fellow and Advisory Board member, a Rhode Island Writers Colony Fellow, a Roots, Wounds, Words Fellow, a recipient of the Tufts University Department of English Prize, and former Teacher of the Year in 2009. Hamilton was a finalist for CSD's Good Trouble Award in 2002 and in 2023, a winner. And now, the Calley Street Teacher of the Year and 2023 City Schools of Decatur District Teacher of the Year, Alicia Renault. Alicia is an educator who impressed on her school, our district, and the field of STEM education. She creates an engaging and energized learning environment for her students, fostering a love for discovery and problem-solving in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and math. For Alicia, her STEM lab is magic. It's a place where all students can be successful. Alicia creates a learning environment where her students get to learn, apply knowledge in creative ways, and play. Alicia says she is continually impressed and pleased at how students, who are not usually considered academically successful elsewhere, shine while in the STEM lab. Alicia, your STEM lab is truly magical. Please join us in celebrating all of our CSD teachers of the year. For the first time, CSD is recognizing Professional Employees of the Year from each school. This group are often the unfung heroes that are the backbone, custodians to cafeteria staff, bookkeepers, front office staff, and paraprofessionals. Schools could not operate without these team members. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate. Your plaque will be delivered to you at your school. Congratulations to all winners. For College Heights, we have Alicia Fulton. Alicia is the epitome of a team player. She helps out whenever and wherever she is needed. She puts in extra hours to ensure the school needs are being met. She never gets tired. Her passion for her job and love for the students are some of the most endearing qualities. From handing out Friday marshmallows to organizing Out of This World Camp, we are grateful for all Alicia does for our district. From Clermont, we have Gloria Ann Alexander. Ms. Alexander is an important part of Clermont. She connects with all students and staff in such a positive way. Ms. Alexander is aware of the needs and ensures she has a laser focus on ensuring Clermont runs smoothly every day. Congratulations. From Glenwood, we have Harold Fields. Mr. Fields is a quiet person, yet friendly, and has formed positive relationships with staff, students, and parents over the years. He demonstrates leadership qualities in every task he completes to the best of his ability without exception. His leadership is demonstrated in his actions and the pride he takes in his work. His work ethic is flawless. Congratulations. Oakhurst Elementary School, Sophia Wilder. Here's the experience in education and Ms. Wilder's intuitiveness, she is able to connect with her students and teach with the ease of a master teacher. She balances fun and silliness with clear directions and support that resonate with her students. Congratulations. Westchester Elementary School, Julia Walsh. Is not with us today, but I will read you reading. Julia is a warm, friendly face that we love seeing each day. She always has a positive attitude and treats everyone around her with love and respect. She is an active member of crew and leads by example each day. Julia is a light, and they are so thankful she is part of the staff. Winona Park, Pat Burton. From the moment that she opens the building for everyone, she goes above and beyond to support students, staff, and parents. Pat's work and attention to detail make the classrooms, offices, hallways, and grounds safe, clean, and inviting to students, teachers, and staff. Fifth Avenue Elementary School, Artisha Cheney. Ms. Cheney is truly an icon in Decatur. She supports students throughout the city and is especially good at developing long-term relationships with students. We are grateful to have her as part of the Fifth Avenue staff. Congratulations. Calley Street, Ms. Frazier, Mary Frazier. Ms. Frazier is such an important part of the Calley Street family. She is one of the warmest and kindest people you will meet. Every morning, she is there greeting the students and staff with a huge smile. Her dedication to keeping the school clean and inviting is beyond measure. Congratulations. Beacon Hill Middle School, Brian Bell. Brian Bell is the best at his job. As a leader of the Beacon Hill Middle School custodial team, he is one of the most caring and hard-working team members of the Facilities and Maintenance Department in CSD. He demonstrates a strong sense of responsibility by taking ownership of the cleanliness and maintenance of the building. Even if something is not part of his job description, he jumps in to help and is a problem solver while bringing a smile and joy to everyone he works with. Congratulations. Lastly, from Decatur High School, Kelly Aaron, who was not able to join us. Ms. Kelly mentors both students and coaches daily. She's a caring adult in the performing arts center and athletics, and makes sure that athletics is a safe, supportive, and inviting environment to all. Congratulations to all of our representatives.
All right. Thank you for that. We'll move on to superintendent's report. Give them another second. Yeah, a group of those teachers, someone was gonna get it under control. Dr. Whitaker, any comments for the superintendent's report?
Yes, Board Chair Herndon, I do. Thank you so much. This week is American Education Week. Each year, American Education Week occurs the week prior to the week of Thanksgiving. During this week, we join schools across the country in celebrating our public school communities. In CSD, we are celebrating the remarkable work of our school communities, and they are doing so by being all-in for all students. Also, November is National Parent Engagement Month. Just Saturday, earlier this week, I attended the PTA District 11 meeting. I appreciate all of our parents who remain engaged and support our teachers and schools. As I have said to Leadership Georgia just this past Friday, when they toured Decatur High School, a thriving community is an engaged community. So again, thank you so much. Today, I will provide you with, one, an update of our strategic plan, all in Decatur; two, the charter system initiative; and three, organizational composition. Now, this presentation is 18 slides, but it's truly three different presentations all in one. So, last spring, you all as a board were very, very busy, and as I have spoken to each one of you, you shared in a lot of different tasks, but there was a priority, and that priority was finding the right superintendent. That also included giving me priorities that you wanted me to focus on in my first 90 days in CSD. So last month, I presented those findings in the 90-day review, which will dovetail into the strategic plan. The plan adopted in the spring is a living The plan adopted in the spring is a living document, and it will be anchored by our CSD charter system. It is my goal that the three documents, my 90-day review, All Indicators, and the CSD system charter will present a through line of coherence, why we do, how we do, what we do for students. As a reminder to our community, our strategic plan consists of four pillars. The first focuses on the CSD cultural experience, connection, culture, and community. The second strategic accelerator ensures CSD students have a sustainable experience, one that is future-ready, yet reduces environmental burden. The third strategic accelerator ensures CSD is a district where we hire to retire, focusing on cultivating and retaining high-quality professionals. The final pillar is where the rubber meets the road, our students, and ensures all students are successful. Today, I will share baseline data for the strategic accelerator. Some of the data will be qualitative, and some will be quantitative, but all of the data and initiatives, some old and some that are refined, will yield the priority outcomes. To build and sustain an engaging and inclusive culture, we must assist the district in fostering rich connections with all of its stakeholders. Our communications district survey baseline data results. It is our goal to have a four at the end of the school year 2324. Additionally, this strategic accelerator illuminated the need to employ functional database systems to assess the implementation, impact, and fidelity of our district-wide culture and climate. Our baseline data points are participation in the best with a participation rate of 85% and students reporting having a trusted adult on the Georgia Health Survey. During the first quarter, strategies employed regarding this accelerator were the establishment of multiple superintendent advisory councils, the listening sessions, our seasonal community meetings, and hosting an innovation dinner regarding our charter. These initiatives foster the opportunity to seek feedback from our stakeholders to express their feelings of being safe, valued, and heard in all CSD settings and locations. Organizational effectiveness and excellence encompasses educating our stakeholders to be well-informed about CSD. To aid in communicating clearly and effectively, we have established a communications department to create and sustain excellence and transparency in financial operations and decisions. We've identified the baseline variance between the budgeted and the actual revenue of 2% for FY '23. It is our goal to reduce that variance by 1%. Strategies already employed are the per pupil expenditure analysis provided today during our work session, completion of a third-party financial health assessment, as well as laying the foundation for a comprehensive budget book for FY '25. By the end of the school year, we will be on time and on schedule for a fall grand opening of our Legacy Park track, which will be ADA compliant and inclusive of all. To cultivate and retain high-quality professionals, we must provide training, coaching, and resources to staff in order to build capacity in their current role and opportunities for advancement. We will do so by partnering with like-minded organizations to expand the breadth and depth of our university partnerships. In the first quarter, we started by offering Clifton strength to all administrative staff. As a strength-based leader, it is vital that staff is able to name, claim, and aim to operate in their strengths. Additionally, the baseline retention rate is 84.6, and we recognize the goal to increase the retention rate by 5%. So we will propose a competitive compensation package for all personnel to support the recruitment and the retention of high-quality employees based on market conditions within the board-established budget limits. I look forward to working with the board on November 28th at our retreat, where we will take a deep dive into our compensation study for FY '25. To prepare all CSD students for a successful future this year, we must do four things. One, increase mastery of Georgia standards of excellence by ensuring teachers are instructing the standards. Two, create curricular coherence through a provision of relevant and meaningful assessments. Three, embed college and career preparedness in diverse ways. And four, support the student mental health and wellness. Key baseline data includes performance on the Georgia milestones for our Black students as well as students with disabilities. Additionally, we will monitor out-of-school suspension data and in-school suspension data for the aforementioned groups. As of the first quarter, staff has conducted school canvases and analyzed student data. We partner with Hanover Research to kick off our MTSS action plan. We set goals for Black students to increase ELA proficiency, for proficient and distinguished learners, by 10%. Additionally, on the Georgia milestones, we will increase the percentage of students with disabilities scoring developing and above by 5%. Finally, reduce MTSS for Black students and students with disabilities by 5%. Today, we provided quarter-one baseline data regarding All Indicators. Future reporting will take place in February, May, and August of 2024. These reports will use visualization tools, key performance indicators aligned to a balanced scorecard with targets and refined initiatives. I look forward to creating the interoperable system to track the data and the overall implementation of our strategic plan. As I stated earlier, the board was very busy during the winter and the spring. You reviewed a system charter renewal in December. That was prior to the unveiling of the strategic plan. The initiatives and goals in the charter renewal reviewed in December were not the goals approved by the Georgia Department of Education in May. Essentially, the state board approved the previous charter goals. Therefore, we must resubmit to the state. So we now have the opportunity, I look at it as an opportunity, to align the innovations in the charter renewal to the application of the strategic plan and its accelerators. The innovations aligned to each accelerator are listed on the slide. We have already conducted an environmental scan of the school districts nationally that have a student sitting on the Board of Education. You should expect to see a policy for CSD at your December pre-work session to begin that work. Staff will be very student-focused as we develop an early learning strategy where "all" means "all" in a location very proximate to our board session today. CSD will have a registered apprenticeship to address teacher shortages and grow the educator workforce. Our learn-and-earn apprenticeship will establish a science of reading pathway for current Decatur High School students in the Teaching as a Profession pathway, and college students seeking field experience in CSD. Finally, Georgia is the number-one state to do business for 10 years in a row. We must ensure that our CSD students are college and career-ready for the future. Awareness does not start in high school, but it does in elementary school. It is more than a career day, but an intentional partnership with our economic and workforce development partners, such as the city, to develop innovative pathways for our students. So questions for the first two parts of the presentation?
Yeah, so just a couple things to make clear to the public as well. There's a lot of numbers in the presentation, but just to put some solid figures behind that, when you talk about reducing the variance in the budget, moving from 2% to 1%, that translates to roughly $1 million. And it's our intent to deploy as much of that as possible towards compensation and really making Decatur a preferred place for teachers to come to and spend their career. And then we talked a little bit about MTSS.
Yes.
In the work session today, we're actually creating a to ensure that those needs are met as well. And then I'm excited to see the December presentation on the student-elected board member.
Yes. So following today's board meeting, for tomorrow, we will post the MTSS director position, and then we will also post the comptroller position, which both of those speak specifically to the variance as well as the support that's needed for our students.
I didn't have a question, but I'm particular, there's so much exciting stuff in terms of the charter innovations, but I'm particularly excited about the science of reading pathway. We have had conversations over the years about expanding the pathways, and I think this is a very innovative way to do that. And we know that the reading crisis is a national crisis, so it's just a great way to have homegrown folk teachers come here in Decatur and to address a national problem that we are dealing with locally as well. So excited about that.
Thank you.
I think to follow that up, I think it's important to note the clarity and the specificity in your goals for increasing our test scores. I think we talked about in our last board meeting about how the threat some of our state boards have been, especially amongst students of color, and how we need to humanize that data. But the next step is to come up with a goal that's measurable, that's attainable, that we can watch over time. And I think something that looks finite rather than just saying we want to close the achievement gap, or we want to make it look better, I think it's important to, and I think putting some actual framework around that, I think is the part two to that.
Thank you.
The data point I liked was on Slide 4, the Georgia Health Survey, the number of our students who say that they have a trusted adult in the building to which they can draw. Every member of this board has shared a personal relationship with someone whose education had a big influence on their life. You talk to anyone, it's pretty much true. I look forward to the movement rate on that from 70% at our secondary schools up, and I'm particularly excited about that as a way to measure.
Thank you.
So much for what we do. Back to you.
All right, so now, moving forward, we have discussed some of our anchor documents of why we do, how we do, what we do for students. We now must discuss who will lead the work and how we can be most effective in its organization. My core belief, our equity is a vehicle to excellence. Leadership matters, and engagement inspires. As I entered into CSD, I shared with you and staff, I leave from a place of pressure and support. Both of those assist us in getting ahead for students. But transparency is another key component to my leadership lens. I believe transparency builds trust. I meet with each of you weekly and provide updates on my work, the work of the district, and the results we see for students. These levers, transparency, support, and pressure, work in tandem so that I can build the capacity of adults in order to sustain positive outcomes for all students. I believe in order to achieve these results, a reorganization of a few key departments is necessary. As W. Edward Demings said, "Every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it does." The changes outlined on this slide will be effective January 1st, 2024. All staff that are impacted have been notified. In order to maximize the results for all students, I will convert the chief of school performance role to deputy superintendent. That is Karen Newton-Scott. Her added responsibilities are the Equity Services Department, the Director and Coordinator, as well as the Director of Assessment and Accountability. The deputy superintendent also has direct supervision of the 10 schools in CSD. She will be supported by a halftime administrative assistant who currently supports the Associate Superintendent of Equity and Student Services. The All Indicators strategy begs us to refocus on students, weave equity into the fabric of everything we do, reimagine what school looks like to meet the needs of all students, and create spaces where every student feels included. For us to accomplish this, we must have equity closely tied to students, and that would be in the Deputy Superintendent's Division. The Associate Superintendent of Equity and Student Services will now be the Chief of Student Services, with continued supervision of behavior, wraparound services, social work, 504, psychology, and the Director of Athletics. The Nursing Coordinator will now be a direct report to the Chief Operations. And two additional positions will be requested at the mid-year, the comptroller and the MTSS Director. The comptroller is an upgrade of a current vacant position, and the MTSS Director is a new FTE to the organization. At the beginning of the year, I established an instructional cabinet, as well as the traditional executive cabinet. The instructional cabinet focuses on student outcomes by conducting school canvases, which are visits to schools, analyzing student performance, observing professional learning communities, and school instructional leadership teams. The members of the instructional cabinet are included in the yellow box. The instructional cabinet meets twice a month and often in school. The executive cabinet meets every week. I am grateful to the Board of Education for approving the Chief of Communications role in May. The Chief of Communications has played a key part in the timely, professional response to matters faced by the Board of Education and superintendents. The Chief of Communication, Chief of Staff, Coordinator of Board and Student, and the Superintendent's Office, as well as the converted role of the Deputy Superintendent, all make up the office of the superintendent. But in addition to the Chief of Communications, the Board of Education graciously approves a Coordinator of Audits and Investigations, which reports to the Chief of Staff, to directly report any to directly report any allegations of misconduct to you as the Board of Education if deemed necessary. As of today, the coordinator of audits and investigations has investigated and closed twenty-three cases. The most frequent case categories are employee misconduct and employee complaints. Additionally, twenty open records requests have been addressed. The role streamlines the approach to staff protocols and procedures related to investigations and audits. The role has been essential for mitigating risks, reducing our district liability while promoting a positive reputation. This slide highlights the investigative process for any allegation of a staff member except entitled six, seven, or nine. As you see, the investigative process is a ten-day process, resulting in a report and recommendation made to the chief of HR. HR then issues consequences. The ongoing monitoring of the consequence is conducted by the deputy superintendent or the supervisor if applicable. This process will be shared with administrators tomorrow at our administrative staff meeting and provided to all staff via their faculty meetings this month. It will be on our website if a stakeholder, that would be a student, an employee, or a parent, desires to submit an allegation of misconduct of an employee, it can be emailed to employeecomplaints@csdecater.net. We must ensure that all students are safe, seen, and successful. Questions?
We had talked at some point about a position related to community service, or that's not, help me out, like response to community input.
Constituent services?
Constituent services, thank you very much.
Yes, constituent services, so it's not a position, but it's just work. There will be work, we will establish a constituent services inside of chief of staff that will come second semester. So no, it's not a person, but basically there will be a way in which we will work directly with constituents to follow up so that we can look at the patterns and trends of things that, questions that we're receiving from the board or even to the superintendent's office, and then once again focusing on the closure of those items in that timeline. So we're going to do that in second semester.
Okay, okay.
But it won't be a person.
It won't be a person.
It'll be a process and work identified.
Thanks.
I don't hear any others?
No, all right. Well, Chair Hearnin, that completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Move on to the chair's reports. We are entering the season of thanks, and the board is grateful for so much of CSD's students, staff, and families are accomplishing. I'd be remiss if I didn't start off by thanking the veterans. We celebrated Veterans Day this past Saturday. I personally celebrated my father-in-law, who served in the Air Force, like many of us, we have family members who did. I want to especially thank all our staff and teachers that served here in Decatur for your sacrifice. Also want to congratulate the newly elected board member, Mr. Tracy Anderson. Ms. Anderson will be sworn into the seat, currently occupied by Tasha White, come January. I and my fellow board members look forward to working with Ms. Anderson on behalf of the students of CSD. We began tonight's meeting with the pre-work and work sessions. Both sessions consisted of reviews and discussions on some important policies, including the IHA policy on the grading system. There were two presentations that outlined plans for enhanced transparency and efficiency of the CSD finances and improving student outcomes in instruction. During the superintendent's remarks, just heard, Dr. Whitaker provided the board and CSD an overview of her plans to ensure coherence in implementing the findings of her ninety-day review, the all indicator strategic plan, and the new charter system initiatives. She also shared updates to the organizational structure we are excited about. Again, I applaud all the students and staff who were recognized during this afternoon's presentation. The board joined Dr. Whitaker, and we congratulated to thank CSD heroes, fifth grader Chandler Gibson, high school senior Tessa Hibner, for their quick thinking during the choking of a classmate in a hit-and-run accent involving a crossing guard. We also celebrated the championship-winning team of soccer at Beacon Hill, Go Bulldogs. As a former educator, I'm especially pleased to join the district in congratulating Ms. Alicia Reno, our district teacher of the year, and all of our CSD's school teachers of the year and staff of the year. We commend each of you for exemplifying excellence in education. Last month, one of the many observances was learning disabilities awareness. During the October board meeting, we received a presentation on dyslexia and its effects on learning. The next day, Vice Chair Dr. Carmen Sultan had an opportunity to delve deeper into the difficulty students with dyslexia experience as a participation in a simulation hosted by members of our dyslexia task force. As we continue, the month of November, we join our schools and communities in celebrating Native American Heritage Month, where we will acknowledge and pay tribute to all indigenous peoples for their rich history, traditions, and cultural contributions. We'll also observe National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. According to the National Center for Homeless Education, 1.4 million youth experience homelessness each year. The SOL and Federal Programs Department works with our community partners to support our students and families currently experiencing homelessness. As a board, we are serious about our commitment to implementing our strategic plan and improving the outcome for all the students of CSD. I'm going to end by reiterating the need for our public's grace in this time of change, our support in our efforts to be great on our students' behalf. Fellow board members, any thoughts or comments you all would like to share?
Want to congratulate the teachers, who we, you know, got the teachers of the year awards and the staff members who awarded. You know, there are so many of our teachers and staff I think are deserving. I know that these folks who got acknowledged tonight, you know, really, you know, have put in the work, and I just wanted to congratulate them.
Well said. All right, we will now move to the action items. We do not have any action on executive session items. Board will move now to the consent agenda items, which include a personnel report, school nutrition report, and monthly financial reports. Dr. Whitaker, the financial report includes a presentation.
Yes, Chair Hearnin, I would like to call on Ms. Lumia Broom, chief financial officer, to present the monthly financial reports.
The September 2023 financial reports are located in the assembly agenda. The general fund budget is approximately $98 million. As of September, the district has collected thirty percent of approximately $29.4 million of budgeted revenue year-to-date, which is in line with the percentage that was collected this time last year. September revenue is 192% more than the amount of revenue collected for August due to the increased earnings from the state QBE revenue of the month of September through June to cover salaries and benefits of earned employees. Earnings on investment continue in a trend higher than anticipated. Approximately $55,000 was received for September, which is approximately $32,000, or 136% higher than the amount received in September 2023. A budget amendment will be submitted in December to increase the anticipated revenue for earnings on investment. All other revenue is trending as anticipated. Expenditures are normal for this time of the year. The district has expended fourteen percent of the overall budget, or approximately $14 million year-to-date. For the month of September, expenses equated to approximately $8 million. This is nine percent higher than what was spent in September 2023, which is due primarily to salary and benefit increase. The majority of September expenditures are for salaries and benefits of ten-month employees whose new 2024 salaries started this month. For the month of September, there's a deficit of approximately $3.5 million, which means the district expenditures for the month of September were 3.5 million more than the monthly revenue. The 3.5 million will be taken from the fund balance, which is normal for this time of the year. Overall, year-to-date, there's a surplus of approximately $16 million, due primarily to the large receipt of property tax collection hosted in July. Last year this time, there was a surplus of $14 million. The surplus of revenue is normal at this time of the year and accounts for the healthy fund balance of approximately $31 million, which includes the unadded beginning fund balance for approximately fifteen years. Please note that the fund balance will decrease as expenditures increase. September revenue for capital funds consists of approximately $592,000 from earnings on investment and stocks collected. Expenditures are trending low for this time of the year, and the $3,892 deficit will be covered by the fund balance, which is currently approximately seven million. Fiscal year 24 anticipated expenditures for capital is approximately seven million. School nutrition revenue and expenditures are trending within the same range as previous years. School nutrition revenue for the month of September was approximately $223,297, with the largest source of revenue at $108,348 from school breakfast and lunch. Expenditures for the month of September were $200,403, which is within range of the projected expenditures for the month. The $22,894 surplus of revenue will increase the fund balance, which is currently 1.5 million. Special revenue funds or other funds included federal and state grants not budgeted and general funds. We are continuing to close out fiscal year 23 grants that expired on September 30th, 2023, and are receiving reimbursement from the state. We are preparing for fiscal year 24 grants, which are effective October 1st. I will be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification as needed.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Broom. Do I have a motion to approve those consent items, one through three?
To approve consent items, items one through three?
Thank you, Board Member Utz. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we will review this request for proposals for fire alarms, fire suppression, low voltage services. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Chair Hearnin, I call on Mr. Sergio Perez, chief operations officer.
Good evening, Board Chair Hearnin, Vice Chair Dr. Sultan, esteemed members of the Board and Superintendent Dr. Jim Whitaker. The request for proposal 23005 for fire alarm and fire suppression services was posted on the state procurement registry and CDS schools of Decatur website on September 19, 2023. We received responses from five contractors on October 10, 2023. The evaluation committee is recommending CLIF fire and plana technology to be awarded for fire alarm and fire suppression services contract. The cost of these services is not to exceed $500,000. The budget has been allocated with the general funds for the fiscal year 2024. Additionally, we have the request for proposal 23006, low voltage services, that is also posted on the state procurement registry and CDS schools of Decatur website on September 19, 2023. We received responses from four contractors on October 10, 2023. The evaluation committee is recommending ECI and RB Communications to be awarded for low voltage services contract. The cost of these services is not to exceed $500,000. The budget has been allocated with the general funds for the fiscal year 2024. You have any questions?
May I read the motion statement for the request for proposal 23006, fire alarms and fire suppression?
Of course.
I moved at the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education, I approved the superintendent's recommendation to award and execute the contract for fire alarms and fire suppression to CLIF fire and plana technology.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to accept the request for proposal 23006?
No move.
Thanks, Board Member Utz. May I have a second?
Second.
Right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right, and may I read the motion statement for proposal 23006, low voltage services?
Yes.
I moved at the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education, approve the superintendent's recommendation to award and execute the contract for low voltage services to ECI and RB Communications.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the request for proposal 23006?
No move.
Thank you, Ms. White. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Johnson-Davis, appreciate it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sergio. Moving on to what I believe is overnight out-of-state student travel.
Thank you, Chair Hearnin. I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, chief of staff, to review field trips.
Good evening again, Board. Board, policy ISCD field trips and excursions requires overnight and out-of-state field trips to be approved by the Board of Education. Attached to the assembly agenda are the three out-of-state field trips that have garnered the superintendent's approval at this time, two from Decatur High School, one for their band corps and orchestra trip in October of 2024, and one for their winter guard competition in March of 2024. There's also a Beacon Hill middle school trip to Savannah for their junior beta state competition convention coming up this month.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation of overnight and out-of-state student field trips?
To accept overnight and out-of-state field trips.
Thank you, Board Member Utz makes the motion. May I have a second? White, any discussion?
I did have just a quick question on how we're ensuring, because this is fairly new, I think, this policy and process. How are we ensuring that every teacher and everyone in the schools that actually routinely takes kids on these field trips is fully aware of this policy so they can get it in for approvals in time and that there aren't any hiccups?
It would be the responsibility of the principal. So anytime a teacher is going to have a field trip, they need to contact, obviously, and get approval from the principal, and then it's the principal's responsibility to ensure that it gets to us in a timely manner. Key to this would be any type of risk or liabilities, because if you're talking about going overnight, if you're talking about going out of the state, we need to make sure that all of those i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Of course. What's the recommended window of time in advance if we're to communicate that to everyone?
A principal should communicate this information at least two weeks prior to this board meeting, so that they would be able to make sure they have approval. But one of the things, one of the key pieces is that before you go, before you actually give out permission slips and things of that nature, you need to make sure that you have approval to go on the trip.
Yep.
And so that's the first step before you begin to raise money or engage community or give permission slips, you want to make sure that this would be approved.
Got it. All right, thank you.
And I guess the follow-up question then is, should you, I assume that it's the responsibility of the principals to know how these kids are going to be transported, especially if they have to go by air travel or something like that, and should they have communicated all those details to you as well?
We have a process in place where they complete paperwork, so our chief of school performance and our chief operations officers are both responsible for reviewing field trips, one from an educational perspective and one from a liability perspective. So there is a whole form that they complete to make sure that those are in place. So we would expect this to be done to you, really three, six, twelve months in advance for approval.
The only time there is a rush of approval is when you do have students that are competing. So say, for example, if you're in a competition and you just qualify, and then it's like, okay, that's an example of where it's not necessarily months of that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor? Uh, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to our next item for action, legislative priorities.
Thank you, Chair Herndon. I would like to call on Mrs. McCall Hart Marunga, Chief of Communications, to share, uh, twenty twenty-four legislative priorities.
Good evening, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Sultan, Board Members, and Dr. Whitaker. The City Schools of Decatur Board of Education annually adopts legislative priorities to support the mission, vision, and goals of City Schools of Decatur and its strategic priorities of equitably and effectively approving outcomes for all students. The following twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four legislative priorities were brought to you last month for discussion. I am presenting your proposed revisions and two additional additions for final review and approval this evening. Again, the proposed twenty twenty-four legislative priorities are categorized under four focus areas. Safety and security, mental health, funding, local authority, and governance. Priority number one, student and staff safety. The proposed during last month's work session, pre-work session, are indicated in red under third and fourth priorities under student safety and security. Under priorities for pri, the third priority, funding for monitoring potential physical and cyber threats and continuous training for school administrators to ask that we add cyber threats. Under the fourth priority, funding for the installation, licensing, and maintenance of physical safety and cybersecurity systems. Again, you ask us to add licensing and maintenance of physical safety and cybersecurity. Under legislative priority two, mental health. Under the main priority where we say CFC opposes any legislation that prevents schools from creating inclusive learning environments where all students can thrive in a manner consistent with their identities. There was discussion last month about making that their identities, and so we've updated that. And then, under the fourth priority, decreasing the student to school counselor ratio to ask that we add that the American School Counselor Association recommends a student to school counselor ratio of two hundred and fifty to one. Under the third priority, funding, we have one addition and two recommendations. The Board requested the addition of a priority to increase funding for green infrastructure and electric buses. You will see this indicated in red. After making the priorities public, two additional recommendations were submitted for your review and consideration. We've updated the priority to reduce barriers to attract and retain talent. The full priority now reads as follows. Reduce barriers to attracting, retaining talent and support with the employer portion of non-qualified employee health benefits. We've also added the priority that you've listed, uh, priority, the last priority. During the twenty twenty-three legislative session, HB five thirty-eight and SB forty-eight on literacy and dyslexia were approved. However, they were not fully funded. So we've added the following priority. Fully fund HB five thirty-eight and SB forty-eight regarding literacy and dyslexia. I should mention that this was a recommendation that was brought to us by members of the Dyslexia Task Force. There were no revisions or additions to priority four, local authority. Again, this is a list of our education partners as we head to the legislature in twenty twenty-four. Um, they're listening. We did add membership into the Georgia Educational Coalition this year. Upon review and approval of the twenty twenty-four legislative priorities, you, the Board of Education, will ask the Decatur delegation to support the following legislative priorities during the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four session of the Georgia General Assembly. CFC community and Legislative Coordinator Courtney Burnett will provide regular updates to the Board during legislative session. Are there any questions?
May I read the motion statement for the twenty twenty-four legislative priority?
Of course.
I moved that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approved the superintendent's recommendation of the twenty twenty-four legislative priority.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation? Thank you. Davis, do I have a second? Any discussion? Thank you for all your work on this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Marunga, for your work on the twenty twenty-four legislative priorities. We look forward to working with the Decatur Cap delegation.
Then I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff.
Porpoitieri.
Yes. So that she can present three policies for a second read ultimately action.
Great. First up is Policy G A G C, Employee Ethics. This was discussed during work session. There was no public comment. It was entered through Assembly. I recommend to approve Policy G A G C, Employee Ethics for action.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to approve Policy G A G C, Employee Ethics for action?
No move.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next is Policy G A E A, Employee Protection. I recommend to approve Policy G A E A, Employee Protection for action.
A motion to approve the recommendation.
Move.
Thank you, Mr. Ooops. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. White, second seat. Any discussion? Thank you all. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries unanimously.
And finally, is Policy B A C Equity. I recommend to approve Policy B A C Equity for action.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to accept Policy B A C Equity for action?
No move.
Thank you, Ms. White. Ooops, second seat. Any discussion?
Just want to say that I'm really pleased that we are approving this one finally. It's been a long journey and I'm pretty proud we're doing it.
Got you nod. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for your work, Ms. Lynch, and moving this process forward. Uh, Dr. Whitaker, you have a summary of information items.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair Herndon. Regulation IFBG one, Technology Use Responsibilities has been updated to rename rename a subsection headed to for safety, security, confidentiality, and privacy. Staff has added confidentiality. Safe, it is every employee's responsibility not to forward, share, or otherwise propagate sensitive or confidential information, such as emails with information intended for internal use or internal procedures or documents to any unauthorized outside party.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker.
Couple of minutes before?
Couple of minutes before public comment. We can go to get started. We have enough people present we can speak for sure, correct? Um, the following information is included in your Board Policy Manual. Members of the public acknowledge this information when they sign up. As a reminder for speakers, that the opportunity to address the Board during public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Those who wish to address the Board during public comment must sign in before the period begins. Doing so, they are asked to state their connection. To allow time for the Board's other business, public comment will be limited. At the Board's discretion, the public comment period may be extended for a specific specified amount of time or a specif, specific number of additional speakers. The time limit is three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment are not permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the Board of the Body, not to any individual Board member. At the Chair's discretion, persons violating this policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Speakers are not to list complaints about a specific person, individuals connected with the district. The Board strictly prohibits abusive language, threats, comments, cheers, applause, or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave. The Chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. If any speaker's comments begin to verge into hate speech or defamation, I will ask the speaker to end their comments. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the Board will not address persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any of the comments. Instead, a member of the admin team will follow up with the person speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Whitaker, will you please call our first speaker?
Uh, Marnie Grobson.
Good evening. I'm Marnie Grobson. I have a current senior at the high school and a graduate two thousand and nineteen. I've come before you several times, wearing a variety of hats. And from here out, I'm just a mom of a senior and only have a few more months that I can say something because I no longer live in Decatur. So, um, I want to talk about safety. That was brought up tonight. I have to say, I have not been present at a lot of board meetings like I typically am, so I'm a little bit behind. Um, I don't know if physical safety has been talked about when it comes to the entry doors, particularly for the high school and the middle school. And I say that because that's what I'm most familiar with. Um, I worked within the schools last year. I have a daughter who's, uh, an attendance office clerk at the high school in the mornings. And I just want you to imagine, I'm assuming you've all been in either of those schools, if you are in the main office, the attendance office at the high school, and someone rings that buzzer and you have the choice to let them come in or not, how do you really know if they are a safe person? And the moment you press buzz them in, they're in the school. There's not a festival. There's nothing presenting, preventing them from going into the halls. That's not safe. And I can't think of a school I've been in in recent years that doesn't have some type of festival or protection. I do know, last year I spoke with Ms. Lockston about the high school, just questioning. And she did mention that some research was being done about, uh, Mr. D'Amico was looking into some possibilities, to the extent that I know. Um, I hope that we look at that further and sooner in light of everything that's going on. And then, you know, I always talk about mental health. The kids' mental health, they need to feel protected, particularly now with everything going on. And it's not just kids, it's teachers too and staff. So if there's something in the works, great. If it's been talked about, if you can bring it back up again, I think it's really important to have that addressed. Um, furthermore, right now, how it works at the high school, again, I can't speak to the middle school, but when parents drop something off, they're dropping it off at a table outside, I call the spaceship entrance. They drop it off, they put it there, and typically, one of the interns, my daughter and any other student, comes out, opens the door, gets that item and brings it in. It's up to that student at that door. They're the security person. You know, I'd like to think that Decatur is a safe place, all the different things that we say, but, you know, we're no different than anybody else. Well, so, and Dr. Whitaker, thank you for being here, and thank you, Ms. White, for all of your service.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Corvus.
I'm a seventh grade teacher at the middle school in TCM. I, but I want to thank them for the work she's done to make Beacon Hill successful. Every day, she goes above and beyond to support teachers and students in our building across all three grade levels. Her title is, but she is a district change agent. When I have a problem or concern, I talk to. I would like to specifically mention her around-the-clock efforts to dissect and convey the importance of the new math standards and curriculum, her ability to hear all voices in a room and synergize ideas into action, and her constant understanding of the so what of education. This has been a very difficult transition year with the new math standards brought down from the G A D O E. Given the timeframe of their rollout, we were facing a new set of math standards in these task forms that were bundled together in late July. They have dissected and digested those new standards and tasks so that we can actually teach them. We spend our weekly math meetings basically catching up in real time as we're having to create new summits on the fly. My teammate has been making those. And we tell her, we've made the summative, we're anxious for approval from the district. She makes it happen. Um, and we get it right away. We get that feedback. So I appreciate her in that role. She's also working towards creating a functioning PLC in the middle school. Uh, and I'm in awe of her use of data to inform instruction. I'm coming from Chicago Public Schools. We're all about it. She's making it happen. Um, she has joined meetings at our team's request in order to turn dialogue into action. She listens to every person in the room and validates what we are saying and then restates what needs to be done, uh, in a way that's comprehensive and actionable. I know I often come in with a lot of energy and emotion, and she can say, what I'm hearing you say is, you would like me to come in and serve your room and provide potential behavioral management strategies for this group of students. Within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, she is in my room, providing feedback and support, and giving me the opportunity to improve my instruction. She has even taught a lesson in my room, so I can take up tips from her and watch student interactions. I don't have her full bio in front of me, but she's one of the best teachers this school district has ever seen, um, hands down. And that's what makes her an amazing administrator. So she understands that the purpose of the school is to provide a safe, stimulating collaborative learning environment for all of our students. She sees every single student. She asks how they're doing. She thinks about how we can improve their understanding, and she steps up when there are gaps. The seventh grade team has been without an MTSF math teacher this entire year, and she has personally stepped into that role. We also just lost an eighth grade math teacher, and she has been grading the student summatives, and she's in the room with them. This is why I think I'm the hardest working and most effective administrator I've seen in my seven years of teaching. And she doesn't know I'm talking today, but I wanted to just say these things. Thank you.
Also, uh, the next speaker in person is Zoe Baracano.
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 I'm Zoe Baracano, a Jewish and Italian-American, eight-year resident of Decatur. I am the daughter who's currently attending CFC, and recent developments have compelled me to speak out about the escalating issue of antisemitism. In two thousand and twenty-two, antisemitic incidents reached an all-time high. This year on college campuses, there have been a hundred and twenty-four occurrences since October seventh, compared to just twelve during the same period last year. Despite the Jewish population making up only two percent, we received nine point six percent of all hate crimes, underscoring the severity of the problem, which is unfortunately on the rise. Decatur has a well-documented history of open and overt antisemitism, exemplified by a legacy of Saturday school, where it was run between Tuesday through Saturday, that intentionally excluded Jewish families for thirty years. More recently, yet several years back, concerned Jewish parents have engaged in discussions with CFC administration on stress issues and ensure the curriculum aligns with state standards remaining unbiased and accurate. Despite these efforts, I recently reviewed some course curriculum slides that left me alarmed. The content displayed biases and accuracies and used irreverent language. As a Jewish individual, realizing that the curriculum might contribute to an environment where Jew hatred is becoming more acceptable is not just concerning, it's terrifying. I'm going to skip these examples here. Uh, compounding these concerns, the D H, as Equity Coordinator, sent out a list of one-sided resources, including links to pro-terrorist sites using their CFC email to communicate with the Wilson, Wilson Center of Staff. While the CFC D E I claims commitment to inclusivity on its website, stating we are committed to aligning educational practices, policies, resources to ensure that all students have the access to and feel welcome to participate in high-quality learning experience, regardless of race, socioeconomic status, gender, ability, religion, sexual orientation, linguistic diversity, and other cultural characteristics. The reality for my daughter is different. She regularly hears antisemitic jokes at school and encounters disparaging curriculum, making her feel unglad. In a recent meeting with school administrators, a group of parents, including myself, requested a pause in CFC's involvement in the Model Arab League due to safety concerns for both Jewish and Muslim members of the community. However, our concerns were met with looks of confusion, and administrators consulted only Arab and pro-Palestinian resources before deciding to stay involved with the Model Arab U N. Decatur High School will represent Palestine, and Israel is excluded from the conversation. Simultaneously, the Hebrew language is real national anthem. Mentioned, as part of a collective effort with other Jewish families, my goal is to work collaboratively with CFC to address these concerns and create a safe learning environment for all students. We are specifically urging Decatur's Equity Office to address antisemitism with the same diligence applied to racism and other forms of bigotry. It is crucial that these issues are confronted and rectified. It is crucial that these issues are confronted and rectified to ensure respectful and inclusive educational experience for every student in Decatur. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have two speakers that have signed up via Zoom. Is Erin Galan? No?
Evan Galan.
Evan? Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you so much for hearing our concerns tonight. Um, in a climate that has been increasingly polarized over the last eight years, we have reached a new level of national and global polarization following the onset of the Israel-Hamas war. No matter their politics, people are consuming massive amounts of one-sided, black-and-white information about an incredibly complex, nuanced, and long-running political situation. Our children are exposed to TikTok, Instagram, and other social media filled with soundbites, Islamophobia, and antisemitism. In our school, the language being used in classrooms is reinforcing that propaganda by using biased terms. Referring to the Arab-Israeli War of 1948 as either the Israeli War of Independence or Al-Nakba should not be the default. It is from this basis of bias that these students are entering into the Model Arab League to discuss the Israeli-Palestinian situation. We were informed that students were to refer to other sources than the MAL guidebook for their background information. But if their foundation from trusted teachers is already coming from a place of misleading information, what kind of critical analysis can they bring into their experience at the Model Arab League? As an aside, I also have the AP Style Book for recommendations on how to speak about the conflict and the history of the Middle East or Southwest Asia that I can send to you. Further, the basis for the Arab League is a stance that the state of Israel is illegitimate and that the governing body of Palestine, Hamas, along with several other nations, go as far as to call for the extermination of all Jews. Debating political policy in this, this extreme without prospective vital context and history is only sowing the seeds of Jew hate or, for those upset by these tenets, Islamophobia. This is only exacerbated by the climate of hot takes, misinformation, disinformation, online threats, vandalization of universities, houses of worship, and schools, calling people terrorists or colonizers, and actual hate crimes. In a contemporaneous instance, just this week, our school chorus chose not to perform the Israeli national anthem. This was absolutely the right decision. But if that is too politically charged and dangerous to include in the concert, then participation in the Model Arab League, especially while in the global throes of this war, is surely at least as ill-advised. In our district, where "out of an abundance of caution" seems to be our motto, this would be an opportunity to exercise even a modicum of that caution. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Andrew Lewis?
Good evening. I am a 23-year resident of Decatur with two children who graduated from CSD over the past three years, having attended the district since pre-K. I am speaking to you this evening not only as a resident of Decatur and former CSD parent, but for my comments this evening, I am speaking to you as a Jewish member of our community. In the days and weeks since the October 7th Hamas attack, there has been an explosion of antisemitism across the world. While antisemitism was on a significant rise before October 7th, in the weeks since, antisemitism has escalated to unprecedented levels. Jews across the United States and the world are frightened. Jews in the community of Decatur are not only frightened, but disappointed in the progressive community we thought we knew. In just the past few weeks, the Equity Coordinator for City Schools of Decatur intentionally used his CSD email during work hours to distribute anti-Israel and antisemitic propaganda to other district personnel, requesting their support for his personal agenda. Additionally, the Jewish parents in Decatur feel our concerns are not, are also being ignored, jeopardizing the very health and safety of our students. Next month, Decatur High School is scheduled to participate in the Model Arab League, representing Jordan, Bahrain, and Palestine. Just over a week ago, a group of concerned Jewish parents met with the principal of Decatur High School and two additional members of CSD Central Office. During this hour-long conversation, the group of Jewish parents expressed our various concerns, ranging from the inappropriateness of our participation during these fraught times to the dangers of increasing resentment and hatred by students within the district. We highlighted poor and inaccurate information within the Model Arab League program. For example, I mentioned on the call that a word search of Hamas within the Guide for the Council on Palestinian Affairs, which is being used by Decatur students, highlights how Hamas, quote, "has continuously failed to help ensure accessibility for disabled people." No other critique of this terrorist organization is offered. Might I suggest a fair critique would put into question the Hamas Charter, which calls for the eradication of the Jewish state? Solutions were offered up. We requested CSD to pull out of the Model Arab League for the year for further study or to pass on the representation of Palestine. Both options were denied. These recent actions within CSD are abusive, ignorant, and callous, leaving me and my family horrified. It is incumbent upon you to address these concerns. There is a group of active parents within the district that are ready and available for you and the entire district to find solutions. But to find solutions, this group needs you, the leadership of our district, to understand how and why we are currently frightened and in pain. Please help us address these concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you to all the speakers taking the time to be here with us tonight. As board members, it is important for us to hear the concerns from our communities. We take your comments into consideration. I'll reiterate that sending them in writing to the office of the superintendent is important. The next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 12th. Uh, that will be here at the Wilson Center and we'll continue to follow today's cadence. Also, our next board retreat marks your calendars is on Tuesday, November 28th, 2023. We'll be at the Solarium, the community center of South Decatur. Uh, and there, our major agenda item is to take a deep dive into campus-level data and a competitive compensation package for CSD employees. There being no further business, this meeting. Oh, I don't know. I'll text you in a minute. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:41 PM.
You've got a gavel.
Gavel.
Hi, it's, it's intimidating.